Good evening, welcome to the Regular Planning Commission Meeting, Grand Blank Township of July 11th, 2024. Please rise and join us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice of our law.
Planning Commission members present this evening. We have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Andre, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Honcho, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Bush, Planning and Zoning Administrator and Head Honcho, Mr. Jeremy Smith.
What an introduction.
All right. It can mean several different things. As we go to our agenda. This is an opportunity for public comments. Are you here to say anything to us?
No, I'm just watching.
Okay. Excellent. Sometimes we do the same, so. So I do officially have to open up the public comment portion. Anyone that would like to speak now's the time. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, go on to approval of the minutes of April 11th, 2024. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I did not attend that meeting, but I reviewed the meeting from the tape, and I find these minutes to be correct, representation of what occurred at that meeting, so I would make a motion to accept these minutes.
Motion by Mr. Honcho to accept the minutes as presented. Support by Ms. Hugo. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. That takes us, this has always seemed a little strange to me, approval of the agenda, the order of this, but anyway.
It was...
I know, it's been that way for years. Any changes?
No, sir. Move approval.
Support. It was a motion by Mr. Bush, I believe it was?
Yes.
To approve the agenda as presented, in support by Mr. Honcho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Correspondents? I didn't see any.
Not this evening.
All right. No old business. We have new business regarding zoning case 674, text amendment. I believe this was only a discussion for landscape planning and species practices. You going to take us through this, or how are we going to go through this?
I'll start it, and then I'll pass it off to Mr. Honcho. So, as you can see in the memorandum, this has been something that we've been discussing, that we were going to try and tackle since last fall, when Mr. Anderson, Mr. Honcho, Mr. Bush, and myself attended the Fall Planning Conference, and there was a lot of talk about landscaping requirements and things that we needed to clean up in our book. So, what we've done, and what's in front of you, is kind of a summary of the changes that we are proposing to tackle. The whole landscaping ordinance is not in front of you, the things that are changed are in front of you. So if you don't see it in the text in front of you, it is not to be changed. You can also see where, in green, things were added, and then in red, they were struck Myself and our planning consultants couldn't be here tonight, they had a conference out of state, so they apologize for not being here, but they will be whenever this goes to public hearing, they will be at that meeting if there's any other questions going forward. But I talked with Andy Amott and Jill about this, and then I said, you know, you're only as good as your, the party you have around you, so I gladly deferred this to Mr. Honcho, because Mr. Honcho, as you all are aware, is our tree and landscaping expert. So with his expertise, and Jill and Andy, this is kind of what they've brought before us for changes. Mr. Honcho, if you want to go into a little more detail and kind of describe what was kind of a synopsis of what you guys had talked about?
Well, there's a number of trees that have been allowed to be planted in the township, and some of them were allowed to be planted in places where they were not suited for. So we tried to adjust both the types of trees that we would be allowed, also the types of trees that we would not allow. Some corrections to some of the ways that trees should be planted, trees and shrubs. We talked about making the list of recommended trees to be not in the ordinance, but on a file or addendum kept at the township, so that we would have some flexibility to add or subtract from that list without making a zoning change. There were quite a few changes that I recommended about planting techniques, and how to plant properly for success, university-based findings, and industry specifications.
Just a question for you, Mr. Honcho, then. So I agree in theory with not having the list, but where would the list reside if a developer comes in and wants to do something, he wants to know what trees he can plant as he can, where would that be?
Well, that, we talked about that being with the Planning Commissioner, Administrator.
What are your thoughts, sir?
I'm torn. I, you know, I have to defer to the statesman of this panel, that I don't know how many times we've changed things in the book as far as tree plantings are concerned. I mean, I don't know how often, Mr. Honcho, how things change in your world as far as landscaping, what is allowed and what isn't allowed. It's up to the Planning Commission. I don't have a heartburn either way. It will, I will say this, that we'll make it easier if it's in the book, because then the book is in digital format, and then it's on our website, they don't have to come see me for anything, they can pull up the book, and away they go.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. I would have to, it's not, I don't think it's how often do we make the change, but how quickly we need to make the change. So if a tree or something said, oh my gosh, we found out today that this can't be on there, how fast can we get it removed to fit it in the ordinance?
Just like a normal text amendment change, like we do here all the time.
So we don't have to notify and do all that kind of stuff?
We, it's typically a 30 to 60, well, probably between 60 and 75 day turnaround, because we have to do, start it here, we have discussion, then public hearing, then it goes to the township board for final approval. So just like any other text amendment, I don't know how quickly a disease would spread, but I can't imagine it would be...
I would think that if somebody, if you found that out, we would say, oh my gosh, we're going to do this, set the ball rolling, and let's say it takes 90 days. If somebody comes in between that and says, hey, just so you know, we're not suggesting this tree anymore, because it's going to die on you anyway.
Right.
I think they would be pretty...
They would understand that.
Yeah.
We've had situations not as, not that similar, but in some similar cases where something has gone on, and we went, wait a second, we've got language where we're looking to change it.
Right.
Probably should do this, this is how it's going to be going in the future, and they, more often than not, are willing to be with the change.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to, for Mike, I'm going to piggyback on Dan's question. So my previous job was architecture, and I did a lot of landscape plans when I turned in plants. And based off the ordinance is how I pick plants. So as a developer, I'm just supposed to pick plants and then turn it in, and then they tell me yes or no, without a list. So that's problematic, and that's just going to be more work for Jeremy, because who knows what's on that list or not, if it's not in the ordinance?
That particular recommendation came from the planners?
I'll have the same question for them. How is a developer supposed to choose?
What I thought that they meant was that the list would be on a digital file that would be referenced in the zoning ordinance, and that a developer, a planner, an architect could then go and find that digitally in the township website, rather than have a piece of paper to hand out to them.
So more work for the developers.
Mr. Andre, I think you had a question?
Just real quick, I guess I'm indifferent as to where the list resides. The one thing I was curious about, Mr. Honcho, is I saw the change in the biodiversity from 33% to 20%.
Yes.
Why was that change? Because I, in most of the communities that I've worked in, that it's usually between that 30 to 33%. Most of them have it. Why the change to 20%?
Because we're finding out with the prevalence of invasive diseases and so on, that without that diversification, you could lose theoretically one-third of your plants and your trees in a particular development, or in the township, partly because most of these developers are selecting similar trees on every plan. And so our township is loaded with maple trees, for instance. Every plan's got maple trees on it, and there currently is an invasive pest in the U.S., Asian longhorn beetle, that infests primarily maple trees.
Is this a trend that you guys had noticed at the conference as well, that there's been more of a movement for this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, one thing I want to point out, and I do agree that a tree ordinance is a good thing, I like trees. At that same conference, what I kind of saw as a red flag on here, is as you were in that class, talking about trees and tree ordinances, how to effectively do it, I'm in another class where they're going over lawsuits that different communities have had on various things, such as chickens and so forth in your yard, and one of them that they talked about was a lawsuit against a corporation, Charter Township of Canton versus 44650 Incorporated. And that's where a property owner bought 16 acres of land, and started going to clearcut the land before the township approved it. Township sued him, he was found, or the judge agreed to the township, the guy appealed it to two different courts, it got to the state court, and they said, no, the township can't make you do that. That was kind of a red flag to me on this ordinance, and I'd kind of like to have Mr. Laddie review that a little bit. What I think the, are we charging people for trees anymore? I don't think...
No. So that was deemed unconstitutional, so that portion of the book has been removed. The only thing that we have, we have a woodland ordinance, and it states that you can clearcut your land unless it is the caliper of trees are eight inches and bigger, and if you try to remove 25% or more of those, you have to bring a plan before you folks today, and would have to approve that plan to remove more than 25% of eight-inch caliper and bigger.
Okay.
But if there was all scrub trees and grass, you can clearcut the rest of that, no problem. Since you hit that eight-inch in caliper, you have to prove that there's the percentage of those eight-inch in caliper and bigger, and then you can only remove up to 25% of those bigger trees.
So you can just cut slowly, it'd take four years, and you can wipe out everything?
But I mean, then once, if you're going to bring us a site plan, the site plan has, you know, we have to put in X amount of trees, you have to do landscaping depending on what it's next to, you've got to put this and put that in, so you're not going to just completely wipe out a whole lot without anything being put back on it. You may need to clear out some of the scrub things, but you're going to have to, and more often than not, we've, in all of our site plan, you know, review meetings, we've never seen anything where they've completely just wiped a site clean and, you know, basically started over. There's always been quite a bit of growth.
Check out the new Costco site, if you want to see clearcut.
Well, that's my, first is, I recall we discussed the tree fund and making developers pay for trees, and putting that money somewhere, and I'm glad we did eliminate that.
Yes.
That's a good thing, and that was a major part of this. So, that answers my question.
My thoughts are that if we were to go with this proposed idea of having a separate list, that it might be more important to include the prohibited trees than it would be the allowed trees, because that's where something like what happened with emerald ashbore came through, and we knew what the future was going to be for those ash trees, and yet we were still allowing those trees to be planted, even though we knew what the future would be for those trees. So that's, you know, if we can move in 90 days, then that's fine. I think Andy thought that to avoid a change in the zoning ordinance, it might be better to have those, the list of trees separate.
I'm just concerned it's going to get lost.
That's, now that we're speaking onto this more, I think you're right. I mean, they're pretty, I mean, it's laid out pretty, I mean, landscaping ordinance is at least 15 pages in the book. I mean, it's already there, let's just leave it, let's just correct it, and be done with it. Either way, I don't have heartburn, but it, like Mr. Bush said, it's just easier, and Mr. Gelling said the list might just get lost, so let's just keep it in the book, and we need to change it, we'll change it in less than 90 days. I mean, it's, Mr. Honcho, have you ever seen anything, you know, a disease wipe through something in less, in more than 90 days?
Not trees.
Shrubs?
Well, more likely it could be annuals than trees or shrubs.
Gotcha.
I had that line highlighted, because I knew that was going to be a point of discussion, and I didn't have any, you know, I didn't have a dog in that fight either way.
Mr. Anderson?
Question to protect the township too, if you've discussed this with anybody else. Would a developer have a leg to stand on? He builds a new subdivision in the 25-acre property behind my house, and we make him landscape according to this, and I go out to the local tree store and buy five maple trees and plant them in my backyard. This would only affect new development, not what's already currently there, but I could plant a new property, or new tree on private property.
Correct.
If a property owner, you build a subdivision today, and five years, now the developer's done, he's left, now that's my yard, can I plant a maple tree?
Yes.
So this really isn't doing anything.
And I don't think it applies to single-build new homes either.
It doesn't. It really, I mean, if, when we get a new subdivision plan, they have to provide a landscaping plan, so that, at that point, yes, we will have, you will have, you know, the authority to review that, and to make sure that those plantings are correct at that time. If you want to plant a maple tree in your backyard, you know, six years from now, whenever this development's already been done, there's no permitting, there's no...
Right.
I mean, you could, you could put up spruce trees, and, I mean, they've got problems now too, right, Mr. Honcho? So...
Colorado spruce.
Yeah, so, we can't, we can't stop it, we can't stop it all, I guess is my point.
Just trying to think of some proper word, but, just putting a burden on the developer for something that's not going to prevent the exact thing from happening anyway.
Well, and what we can do too is, let's just say, because the landscaping plan that they do submit, they are held to that, so if something dies, they have to replace it. I have a situation where, dealing with currently, where it keeps, the landscaping is dying every year. Bring in an amended site plan, something similar, you guys can approve it, if it's small enough, it's only a few spots or whatever, I'll do it administratively, but they're supposed to follow that, they're required to follow that site plan. If it dies, they have to replace it, that's right in the book. So if they need to amend something because something's dying, something won't grow in a certain area because of soil or what have you, bring me an amended site plan, and we'll get it corrected, and put something in there that'll stay growing for years to come. We do have mechanisms to keep these plantings alive, it's just, it's not an overnight thing. It just, it can't be. Our review process just doesn't allow for overnight change.
Oh, no, I totally understand that. Totally understand that, and that's not what I'm questioning.
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
You know, I agree with Larry, you know, how do we manage this? And just to comment, I think, until we can get, you know, the state, and Michigan State, where we got a lot of information from, and they're a big agriculture school, until we can get them talking to bourdines and all the nurseries around here, that are selling every single species, because they want to make their maximum amount of money, they know what grows here and what dies here, but they still sell them. So until we can get them on board to stop selling stuff that doesn't belong in Michigan, it's always going to be a problem. They know what, they know what shouldn't be, shouldn't be here.
Just to play devil's advocate with you, Home Depot and Menace...
Oh, yeah.
Well, them, but on top of that, they also sell the canvas in a box sheds that we don't allow either.
Absolutely.
There's no way we're going to get them to stop that. Every municipality is different.
Right.
Every municipality has different lists.
I agree.
They should be somewhat similar, based on what the state is saying is good and isn't good, but we're not going to be, we can't regulate this to death. We can do the best we can with what we have.
Mr. Hoffman?
Not to give a shout out to bourdines, but apparently in the other counties, there's a boxwood moth problem, and a lot of them are, a lot of oxwoods are having horrible trouble. So, it was my kids, they were up at bourdines, and they wanted to buy some boxwoods, and they're like, are you sure you want to buy this?
Bourdines did?
Yep.
Good.
We're not going to give you a warranty, we're not, we're not going to do this, we think these things are going to be...
But they still sell them.
But, to your point, but to your point, you know, why don't they say something?
Right.
You know, and so they did, right? They didn't have to.
Made their money, but they won't warranty it.
Right.
Where they would warranty something that...
Well, no, they didn't make the money off of my kids, they took the advice from a professional that said...
Said, don't buy it.
We don't think you should buy these. I mean, they have them sitting there. If somebody wants to take a risk, go ahead.
That may have been the only, the only professional or salesperson in the store that made that recommendation, it might not have been a bourdain policy. And I'd have to, not to disagree or anything with your statement or what happened, but, you know, that, those insect pests are pretty easily controlled by pesticides, and a lot of people have boxwood hedges that are already established, and if a, and if a plant dies, or it's, a kid runs over it with the lawnmower, or whatever, they're going to want to replace it with the same, with the same plant.
Yeah.
So, but I'm happy to hear that bourdines, at least in that instance, is having that effect on customers' selections. I do want to point out that when it comes to planting at your house after you owned it for whatever, you own it, that many HOAs will not allow that to happen. You have to get permission from the HOA to make any changes in your landscape, and there's a lot of things that's, you know, a lot of rules that they have.
My HCA doesn't have that authority. It's an older, it's an older neighborhood, and yeah, there's, you can't do anything.
Just that none have that authority. So, we're going to recommend to Andy that he changes that verbiage, and to keep the list in the, in the ordinance, correct?
If that's what you guys want to see, I would support that as well. I think it would make everybody's job easier going forward.
We just do that by consensus?
I just want to comment, if we put it in the ordinance, then anytime we want to add a tree or take a tree off the list, we have to go through the whole ordinance changing process?
Yes.
I think that's a little too cumbersome.
That's what we do now, right? I mean, if we...
Any, any changes to the book, regardless of, anything has to be, has to be...
Anything outside of the plan, the book that we have, where it comes to...
Right.
If the change was going to be made, it would come before us as, we're adding a Colorado pine, we're taking out a Colorado pine. It should take like five minutes. It's not like it's a big discussion point.
No, but it's, it's a, I think you're getting at the duration of the processes, is that what you're getting at, Dolores, is the 90-day basically process?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I was wondering whether we even need, whether we could just have a recommended list, and to add something to the, add a tree or take a tree off the list, maybe we could just say that the recommendations come to us, and then if we approve it, fine, it goes on the list, if we don't, stays on the list.
So you want a separate list from having it in the ordinance?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, there is some discretion in the book, you know, we're in the site plan review process, the Planning Commission does have, I'm not sure, I'd have to look through the landscaping portion, but in some instances, let's say for parking, for instance, if there's land bank parking that needs to go in, the Planning Commission or Site Plan Review Committee has the discretion to approve things that, you know, they have latitude in the book in certain things, and maybe just a statement of, based on what the state, you know, if the, if they can prove that this should or shouldn't be in there, if they bring us just cause, or bring you just cause, then, then the Planning Commission or Site Plan Review can approve or deny something. Just a suggestion. Something with a little latitude in there.
Maybe we could run this by Mr. Laddie and see if he, you know, thinks that there's a way to do it without having to, you know, go through the whole amending zoning ordinance to...
Yep.
Mr. Hoffman?
Who would tell us this?
This...
That a tree is diseased, don't plant these anymore, who would tell us this?
It may be noticed by anyone in the newspaper, or any other information. I mean, I may be the first to get it, but in this particular case...
What I'm looking for is, is there an agency? Because then couldn't we just put it in there and says, if an agency says these trees are no longer there... If the state of Michigan says that this is a bad tree, it's automatically off the list, whether we have it in the book or not.
Right.
So that would be the Michigan Department of Agriculture.
So, that could be very easy.
Yeah, I want something definitely like that, because you know what you're talking about, I'm not disputing that at all, but she may not be here in eight years, and then in nine years she wants to build a sub, you know, so we...
And I'm not perfect either.
Right, right, no, none of us are, so, not disputing, but I do agree that a specified agency would have to be a rule on that.
And it doesn't have to come to us at all.
And I would have the latitude, if they, if somebody brought me something from the Michigan Department of Agriculture, and they say, hey, I want to put this tree on my site plan, I can, we can, we can do it, if you guys are okay with that.
The state of Michigan, it's not allowed.
Right. And that, and that's, you know, because I see the site plans before, and if you see it, so I can say, yeah, this is a change we got to make, you know, but, like I said, you got, Mr. Honcho's, you know, if it gets by me, then at least there's another failsafe that we all can see that it shouldn't be on there.
I don't know if our architects receive information regarding trees and plants.
Well, you're really from a landscape architect. Do you have something you want to say additional, Mr. Bush?
I just want to state, we had a site plan review a couple months back, and there were quite a few trees that are on the list that we shouldn't use. Although we couldn't tell them to change them, we suggested they change them, and they were going to change them.
They did.
And they did change them. So, you know, a lot of it can be handled at Site Plan Review too, and the developers are open to that. Obviously, we can't say what to do, but we could just suggest things. And it worked.
You were saying earlier about putting demands on builders. That's, to me, that's the quantity, more than it is the type. You know, because you would think the type would be more, oh, you're hearing that, that's not growing well up here, great, why would they want to waste the money either?
Right.
I agree.
It goes back to my point of, it's their, it's their landscaping plan that they submitted and was approved, and they're responsible for keeping it up, so it's in their best interest to put something in there that we tell them shouldn't be on their site plan.
Right.
It's not in our interest to see somebody replace trees every five years, because we'll never see a mature tree in the landscape. So, we have a reason.
Both sides, dual-sided, for sure.
Right, absolutely.
Sounds like we want to add some verbiage following the recommendations of Michigan Department of Agriculture.
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody?
That makes sense.
All right, sounds good.
So, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review this entire proposal or not, but there are some changes that I'm going to suggest, strongly suggest, about these tree planting details that are here. For instance, this detail calls for specified planting mix, where all the universities and everyone in the landscape business is told that you should use the native soil to backfill around the tree, you should not use a planting mix. And if any, I can explain why, but if you dig a tree, a hole for... And if any, I can explain why, but um, if you dig a tree, a hole for a tree and fill it with potting soil, let's say, the tree's gonna grow its roots into that potting soil and it's gonna really like that potting soil and they're not gonna wanna go out into the surrounding soil and establish the tree well. So, um, it's well recognized that, so there are some other things regarding staking and the trunk flare and some other things. And, uh, and I'm surprised Andy used that because Andy and I looked at this, um, which is landscaping ordinance from the city of Claus. And we use this quite a bit in our discussion and it shows a very good, uh, tree planting detail.
We trust your expertise there.
There was another part about, uh, incentives to preserve existing trees. That's on page three. Um, so we talked about, uh, how sidewalks and bike paths and parking lots may impact the root system of existing trees in the landscape. And so he, the line, last line in that paragraph says, the storage of soils or other materials during or after construction within the drip line is prohibited. But I believe that that should also, um, prohibit traffic and soil compaction and grade changes for those existing trees. I've seen many developments go in where they had beautiful two-foot diameter, um, oaks and walnuts and various other trees where they, they did ditching, trenching, uh, and so on, that it didn't kill the, it took five or 10 years for the tree to die, but that tree had another 50 or 100 or more years of life expectancy if, uh, it hadn't been disturbed. Big trees are a lot like me. Um, I can't take a fall down the stairs, okay? Older, the old. So young trees can take a lot more than old trees can. So I have a broken rib. So I can testify to that. Um, but uh, you know, I think that's something that I'm gonna recommend that Andy puts in there.
So are you saying to not allow sidewalks within drip lines of trees at all?
No, but that we have to consider the impact that those sidewalks will have. Or, and more importantly, what excavation would, so if you're gonna, um, just excavate four inches deep or six inches deep to put in a sidewalk, there are methods to do that and, and the further away from the trunk of the tree, the less impact that that sidewalk would have. So there's other things that may come up, uh, that we can address through site plan review uh, regarding that effect on those large trees.
Do you have some recommended verbiage in there? You will have some?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just a technical question. Uh, um, what is a pervious surface cover?
Uh, pervious is, uh, not asphalt or concrete.
So what would be an example?
Um, lawn, grass. There are some, they now manufacture some pervious, um, asphalt-like materials that water will actually drain through, uh, and they make, um, geo grid, um, forms that are like a landscape panel that has holes in it. And so that you apply that on top of the soil surface and then you fill those grids in with topsoil. And so now you can drive, walk, whatever on that area without compacting the soil.
So it's like an alternative to having grass. You would have this.
Yes, and so grass, it, it mentions grass as a pervious surface.
Oh, okay.
Um, but it could be other ground covers besides grass. It could be, uh, whatever allows the tree to get water naturally and, and to let the roots get air. Um, trees don't drown, although we see a lot of trees die from overwatering. It's not because they drowned. It's because they couldn't breathe. So it's, the trees, all organisms are very similar. We all need air and water. And, um, trees, tree roots can only get air when the water leaves the soil. Um, so that's how trees are killed by overwatering. Um, that they, they never get a chance to get air to the root systems. So that, that's the idea of the pervious surface.
Okay, yeah, thank.
I'm not sure who to ask, whether it's you or I mentioned it to Jeremy, the below the tree planting detail. It's just some of the wording where it says, uh, uh, green belts along public street frontage is described in section such and such and required trees within parking lots are provided. Does that mean must be provided or?
Well, I believe that since that's not green or red, that that's current language.
Yeah, we need to look at modifying that, I think. The same thing with type of minimum size of landscape meets or should, needs to meet or must meet ordinance standards. And be properly labeled.
Yeah. I didn't.
Jeremy took a quick look and I think he was coming up with the same thing as he thought that it was already in the ordinance. Just a note to make, I guess.
That's pretty much all that I had that, um, that is different from what is in front of us. Um, oh, I did have one other thing, that irrigation systems should, uh, should be required to have moisture sensors or rain sensors. We, I'm sure that all of us have driven by subdivisions and developments where the sprinklers are on and it's raining still. Um, or it's just rained and we're, and we're irrigating and that's not good for the landscape or the environment.
What is our current requirements regarding irrigation systems? I don't have my book here.
Say that again?
What is the current requirements for irrigation systems? Are they required on all site plans or no?
No.
Lungs, lungs, the trees, everything lives?
Mm-hmm. Again, it's on them. Once you submit a site plan and the landscaping plan's approved, you're responsible for all plantings on that plan. We recommend drip lines. We recommend putting in irrigation, but it's, we, we don't require it.
I think we should require that if they install it, that it should have some, not just be on an automatic timer, that it should be taken into account rainfall and soil moisture. And those things are easy and cheap.
Anything else?
I have mixed emotions on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That item you brought before me is already in the book, the, the black. The green is just an addition to, it's in a different section. It's in, there's a landscaping section under the site plan review standards in 6.2 where the landscaping is in 5.9 or 5.10. So there's a couple of different places where we have landscaping requirements throughout the book.
Do we need to modify that? Just saying we need to look at the word when I read it out of context that it appears that it's. I don't know, I guess I gotta go back and look at the.
Questionable, misleading.
Pardon me?
Questionable, misleading, not thorough.
Clear.
Not clear.
I mean, I, the way I read it is it says, green belts along public street frontage as described in the section 5.10-2 and required trees are provided. It's not saying you must, it's saying 510 is what?
It's telling you where to go.
Where it's telling you where to go look in order to.
What do you do?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
I guess my only.
My. Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I don't wanna make it burdensome for a developer to come into Grand Blanc Township. As opposed to a new developer. And it seems like we're adding, always adding and adding. I don't know that I disagree with Mr. Yancho's experience and expertise. At the same time, I don't know that I wanna make. But I guess, I guess it's easy enough to, to get along with, but it seems like we are complicating it versus simplifying it. I don't know if I'd be ready to send this to the board just yet.
No.
Right, Scott.
I mean, it's, it's something that from what I've, what's being put in front of you today, some of this or all of it is necessary. It's just, it's not really changing a lot of things. It's clarifying things more. So it's not something that's being more cumbersome for developers. It's clarifying things for me, for them, so that this process is easier, in my opinion. So that way, when they come in, they know what is, not that they don't know what's expected of them, but it is very clear now, black and white, what, where things were kinda vague are now, have more detail in them to tell them, this is what you need to do and you better have it on the site plan. So I, I, I see your point in it, but in my opinion, it, it's needed, it's necessary. It's just more, it helps me get through site plans a little bit easier because it's very black and white.
One of the things I see at some point, a lot of the developers, they're looking for some direction.
Yes.
And they say, okay, how do I get this approved? Here, we've made this nice and clear.
Yeah.
Oh, great. That's fantastic.
Right.
You know, if it's vague and it's not written down.
Right. Then it's open for interpretation and now we have to make decisions one way or another at a site plan review meeting where we, we're trying to figure out intent, where now we're trying to put more detail into things where it wasn't before. So I, I.
I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I understand your, your concern, but I, I, I don't think we're mudding the waters. I think we're clearing them up.
Very good. Any other discussion on this topic from anyone?
So I guess my question is, with the few changes that Mr. Yancho will be proposing and putting the list and the few, um, recommending, you know, Michigan Department of Agricultural, do we wanna have another discussion meeting? Do we think we've got this pretty well nailed down? We wanna have a public hearing in August? Do we wanna have a, um, another discussion meeting in August and, and do a public hearing in September?
Public hearing is part of the process, right? It's just a matter of when. I just would like to see us get some of the language cleaned up before it goes to the board. We're not embarrassing ourselves. I'm okay with public hearing in, in August. I don't think there's anything huge here.
Is it possible for you and I and Andy to sit down in the next couple of weeks, do you think?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think there's.
Have this discussion and.
Few items that.
Clarification.
To nail down those items that you and I both have concerns over, yep. Hmm?
Everyone good with that?
Yes. We can always, if we, even if we go to the public hearing, let's just say there's something in there that's not clear, we can always table it for September. So we can call for the public hearing in August. If there's still a lot of discussion, we can always push it back another month. Okay?
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Close that topic, go on to committee reports is next on our agenda. Anything from Township Board?
Nope.
Zoning Board of Appeals?
We're gonna have a ZBA meeting in August to elect new members, just like we will at the August, um, planning commission as well.
Site plan review, I don't think we've seen anything in the last couple of months. There's been some things that were close, but not, haven't come through.
Right, we haven't. Um, you may see something, actually, we'll have a site, we're having a site plan review meeting in a couple of weeks. Uh, for, uh, Chuck Secrenas is doing another development on Tri Park. Uh, semi-similar to what he already has on Reed Road. Um, he's gonna put that on Tri Park. It'd be two, two buildings with, I believe it's gonna be 40 units. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Andre.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight units. Yeah, I knew it was roughly around there. So, um, that's something the site plan review committee will be doing. It's mini storage. That's all it is. Mini storage, nothing else. So that's the only thing we've, I've, I've seen lately.
Anything else from your office?
As far as.
Anything coming up we should be aware of?
Um, I, nothing coming up. Um, I have a, um, admin review on my desk right now. The Grand Blanc Medical Arts on Holly Road, um, is going to be expanding their parking lot. Uh, they're running out of space, so, um, we're gonna be doing that. I'll be doing that. Um, I think of, we have a new dog grooming place over next to Jimmy's Liquor here on Door Highway. We have a, the Rite Aids are all going bankrupt, or they are bankrupt and they're all closing fairly quickly. The two that we have are gonna be closed fairly shortly. Um, I'm getting, I'm already getting interest in other businesses going in there, not.
Not top, not top.
Well, the, just, just so everybody's aware, the board too, the Township Board did pass a moratorium on gas stations for six months, trying to study them and see if we can limit them. I, we're studying to see if we, if Grand Blanc needs any more gas stations. And what may, may happen is like we have, like we have for used car lots, like we have for daycares. As you know, gas stations are special land use in that we also say that they have to be 1,500 feet apart. So you may see some language with gas stations that say, we need to be 1,500 feet apart from any other one in the future. So that may happen. We can't limit them and say, no, we don't want any more. That's not possible, but we can regulate and say, this is. I'm, I've got something in my email about electric EV stations too, but that's a different discussion for another day. That's a whole nother topic in itself, and I know we've already kind of had those, but, um, yeah, that's, that's about it. Um, it's election season, so you see a lot more election signs, just so everybody's aware. Uh, we can't touch them, uh, with code enforcement. The only time we can remove them is if they're in the public right of way. Genesee County Road Commission has given us authority to do that and we are doing so. So if anybody has anything in there right of way, we will be removing them. We will keep them, especially political signs, for 30 days. If they're not claimed in 30 days, they will go in the dumpster. So. Sir?
What about other snipe signs?
Snipe signs are not allowed in the township per ordinance, but Second Amendment, right, Second Amendment? Free speech, right? Second Amendment?
First Amendment.
First Amendment, there you go. Thank you, sir. Uh, we've dealt with this and talked with Attorney Laddie. It, uh, certain things, we can only regulate for location. We can't really regulate for content. So.
So if they're in the right of way, they're in violation.
Which they always are.
Yeah, they put over, put over a graphic. You'll see them. Right, no, it's not really a problem. We should keep on top of removing them. And that has improved. I thank you for that.
It has, and my guys are very, and Amy and Pat and Eric are my code enforcement officers. They are very diligent about our snipe signs and we do not allow them. They don't last long, so if you see them, call us and we'll, we'll get rid of them.
Tell them I said thank you.
I see quite a few of them that go up on Friday evening and come down on Sunday evening.
Yes.
And I've been told that I can remove those as a citizen when they're in violation.
Depending on where it is, I would say I'd be very cautious, cautious of that. It's trespassing. Um, we do have a plan in place for those types and we have had sting operations, if you will, on the weekends where the code guys do work on the weekends. So I don't recommend leaving them out because they will disappear as well.
Any other business?
I have one piece of information. Uh, the planning conference for this year will be September 25th through the 27th. If you. If you are interested, it is in Grand Rapids this year. If you are interested, please let me know by the end of the month, so we can get hotel accommodations and the classes signed up for, so if you're interested, give me a shout, send me an email. I need to know by the end of-
July.
Mr. Andre?
When you talked about the RiteAids?
Yep.
What, if somebody has a use, the, the change in use, what is that? How does that facilitate, does that go through your office, does it go through the building department?
My office.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So if they're proposing something that is permitted within that district, the zoning district, it's just permitted by right, and?
The only time that we would look at something and, and not have another site plan put in there is if it was same use to same use. So let's say it's a retail business where Rite Aid was mostly retail, so if, let's say, let's say Walgreens buys them out.
Here, here, let me pose this.
Go ahead.
Let me pose this, somebody wants to subdivide it and make it into a strip center.
They would have to come before me or you to have that approved, yes.
Just curious about the process, so.
Just to piggyback on that question.
Mr. Bush?
Rumor that I heard is CBS is going to buy all the RiteAids. So how long should we wait before we allow? Because obviously, you don't know if you've been by Walgreens lately, but you can't even park in a parking lot. Everybody in Grand Blanc can't even get the prescriptions for like weeks. And, I mean, we're having that problem, and I'm sure everybody else is too. They're not, they weren't ready for this. And now the rumor says CBS is going to buy them all, so that's going to relieve some of the pressure, but if we let them go to some other place, then we're, I guess now we don't have any pharmacies anymore.
If it's permitted, it's permitted, I can't stop somebody from using their building. Somebody wants to propose, I don't know, like Mr. Andre said, if somebody wants to subdivide it and split it in two and put a liquor store and a convenience store, and I mean, it's, that, if it's, as long as it's permitted to use, it can be done, we, yeah, I, I agree with you.
It will be reviewed.
It still will re- Correct, but if it's retail to retail, it's same use and we don't, and they don't, if they're not changing anything, let's just say they move into the building and don't change a thing, don't change parking, don't change the building, they're just, they move in, rehab the inside, they, they bring me a new sign permit, and that's really the end of it.
So in the industry, what they're kind of seeing, what they're battling, and CBS is battling this also. So to hear that there's a rumor out there that they're buying shocks me because they're closing stores also. And it's because of large online or company-sponsored plans, like Express Scripts, where they're like, if you work for a company, you have to have mail-in to go to this person, or go to that, get them from Express Scripts. And it's affecting not only CBS and Walgreens, but it's affecting small mom and pop drugstores also, to the point where they can't get the same drugs at the same price that they can get it at. There are certain drugs that they're, they're finding that they're saying, you know what? We're not even going to offer this anymore because we're losing money on every time we do it. So I, I think that's the, the danger. I don't, I don't see a CBS buying those, to be honest with you, from the industry standard, unless they change that for a fair playing game, that CBS and local mom and pops can sell the same drugs at the same price that Express Scripts can get.
So my mother-in-law called Rite Aid yesterday regarding her prescriptions, and the woman that she spoke to, well, it automatically transferred her to the Walgreens on Fenton Road. And the woman there told her that Walgreens has bought out Rite Aid. But I do know, my friend works at the Walgreens in Grand Blanc, and they are going to become a 24-hour pharmacy because they're, yeah, it's insane. Yesterday, I was there yesterday, and I laughed because people were lined up all the way down the aisle. And the, and the drive-through was wrapped around the building. Yeah.
Mr. Yancho? I use a mom and pop pharmacy on a regular basis, that's the only one I use. But I know that they're in a buying club so that they can get their drugs at a reasonable price. And they're, and they pass that along to their customers too.
Just a comment, I mean, we're a little off base, you're talking about drugstores. But I think one of the things, some of the drug companies are really encouraging people to do the drugs by mail. And if they, you know, if they make it very inconvenient, you know, to go to your local store because it's so crowded or there's so few or nothing nearby, then, you know, they'll tell you that your alternative is to get your drugs through the mail, which I'm not particularly happy with, but.
Outside of our control, nobody on this board's been reading about it, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Anderson.
That's what my mother-in-law asked.
Support by Mr. Yancho. All those in favor, say goodbye, saying aye.
Aye.
And let me add that it's 7:55 PM, that we're adjourned.